Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, May 16, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission is called to order. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? And I think we'll get to your issues momentarily.
I figured.
Letting you know. Next is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, May 6, 2019, regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure R 2010-09, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Our first action item is consideration and possible action regarding a site plan amendment for Farmers Insurance located at 104 Melody Lane. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, could you give the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. So, the Farmers Insurance is an existing commercial business at 104 Melody Lane. The commission approved that site plan in 2015. The building was permitted and a certificate of occupancy was issued in 2016. On the original site plan, there was an eight-foot cedar fence that was required for the screening between the commercial property and the residential property next door. The property was also subject to the community overlay district, so she met facade requirements, screening requirements. We did approve the cedar fence as an alternate material than the same material as the building. At the time of final inspection, staff, we just completely missed it. It was, since the original site plan, there was several inspectors out there. Becky and I went out there and it was just missed. So, in looking, we got the complaint from the adjacent property owner, who owns the residence there, that the fence wasn't ever installed. There is an existing iron and brick column fence that the residence owns, and the commercial property does have the required landscape buffer with a tree every 25 feet along that property line as well. So, in talking with the business owner, in lieu of installing that fence, there was discussion, I think at the time that the building was built, of some vegetation in lieu of a fence. There was never anything agreed on between the two owners. So, when I called Angela about the fence issue, I let her know that vegetation might be an option, but since the fence was on the site plan, it had to come back to this board to approve anything different. I did send an email this morning in looking at the zoning ordinance. When the single-family residence was built in 1995, an eight-foot opaque fence should have been installed at that time. The zoning ordinance hasn't changed since '95, and I went back and did verify this property was zoned CSC at the time. So, if the eight-foot fence would have been installed at that time, there wouldn't have ever been an issue. It would have been existing. So, I think the current proposal on the table, Angela, both property owners are here to answer any questions. I think the current proposal is wax myrtle, shrubs, 18 of them planted eight feet apart, and the seven-gallon size to provide some additional screening. I think the parking lot is the main concern. They're trying to sell the house, and seeing the parking lot and the cars is the main concern.
Would the homeowners and business owner like to say anything at this time? Will you please step to the podium and state your name, please, if you would please?
My name's Jackie Bailey, and I live at 106 Melody Lane. I've been in the real estate business for a long time. As a matter of fact, I had a real estate company in Friendswood over where the little wine company is now called Bailey Kitchell Realtors, in the 80s. You probably don't remember all that. But anyway, it's my knowledge as a realtor that whenever a commercial property is put in next door to a residential property, it devalues the property. So, I am very interested in doing something to try to buffer the commercial property from my residential property. I told Angela that I'm not in favor, first of all, it was a three-gallon plant planted eight feet apart, and I said that's going to take four or five years to make a screen. I'm interested in a screen, okay? Wherever plants have to be planted to cover the top of the, she came over and we decided that it was about five or six feet that the plant has to be in order to block out the car tops, and that they need to be planted about three feet apart in order to buffer everything. But a three-gallon plant or a seven-gallon plant planted eight feet apart is not going to buffer much. It will maybe in five years, but I'm interested in having it buffered now, or let's go back and follow the ordinance and put the fence in. And I've also told her that I would do a fence from the beginning of the property to where my fence goes, separates the backyard from the front, so it only is about half as big as her lot is. So, I'm trying to be agreeable to everything, but I want a buffer. I want something that works. I don't want to wait five years to get it done. So, whatever you guys think, I mean, to fix the problem is fine with me, but either a fence or vegetation is fine, but I want it blocked, okay? Thank you.
Maybe while you're standing, we'll ask questions and then we'll bring the applicant up.
Okay.
So, Brett, did you have any questions?
Question for staff. Since the CEO was issued and this was dismissed, those things happen. So, since there's an official complaint, now the city has to enforce the fence being installed? Well, I'd much rather see a landscape buffer than a wood fence, because wood fence, they look awesome the first day you put them up, and from there on, it's the best they're ever going to look. They start looking really bad in about a year or two.
I like green.
I do, too.
But it's going to cost a lot to get one big enough to buffer, and I don't think she wants to do that. So, that's the problem that we have.
Well, I'm in favor of doing a landscape buffer. I'll wait till the fellow commissioners think. I mean, the Farmers Building, it's a beautiful building. It has a real residential feel to it.
Yeah, I like that part.
It doesn't look like a, to me, it doesn't look like a typical business. It looks like a home.
Just the parking lot.
Just the parking lot's causing you issues.
Mm-hmm.
Well, right now, I'm for the landscape buffer, but...
The only issue that I have with it is this. There's so many variables when we say, okay, we're going to do a landscape buffer. You know, a three-gallon plant planted eight feet, a seven-gallon plant planted eight feet. We need to figure out how to get an opaque buffer that's tall enough, that's about 6'5, 6 feet tall. So, that's the issue that I have. I mean, you can say, I'll put in plants, heck, you could put in, but I can assure you that a five-gallon, seven-gallon, or a three-gallon plant is not going to cause a buffer. Maybe in five or 10 years, but not now.
Lisa, did you have any questions?
So, I did see the two different, the seven-gallon plants and the fifteen...
And the 15. Now, are you hearing me? I can hear you. And the 15-gallon plants. I saw both of those plant or offerings. Do you feel that the 15-gallon, or were they four and a half, five foot tall, would be a compromise that you could meet with? If you plant them about three feet apart, yes. I went down the street, on my street, there's an iron fence that has a buffer of greenery, and I looked at it very carefully today, because I want to be fair to Angela. They're planted about three feet apart. Eight feet apart is not going to get the deal done. So, yes, I would be in favor of five or six feet planted three feet apart.
I think in doing some, I'm not an arborist or a landscape, but, you know, doing some Google searches and reviewing the information that Angela submitted on the wax myrtles, in order to allow the plants to grow to their full height of eight feet, they need to be planted eight feet apart to give them room to grow. So, if you plant them three feet, they're not going to grow tall, because they're not going to have room to grow, you know, out.
But they're also not going to give a buffer. They're not going to block out that parking lot. So, that's...
They're not immediately, but honestly, there are two violations on the table here. There was a violation, but when you didn't install the eight-foot fence when the residence was built, and unfortunately Angela's having to...
I didn't build it.
Deal, well, whoever built it. An eight-foot fence should have been installed at that time.
Twenty-five years ago.
Well, the issue is both properties are not in compliance.
Yes.
That's the bottom line. Whether you built it or not, I mean, you certainly cannot be responsible for that, but the property's still not in compliance, whether you built it or not. Her property's not in compliance either. I wish y'all could come to an agreement between y'all. It's not our job to play people's court right up here, so...
Well, I want to be reasonable. I just want the cars blocked out. So, whatever she can come up with that works like that, I'm very agreeable to that.
My thoughts are, we enforce compliance on her, we've got to do the same thing to you.
So, you want me to build a fence?
Y'all could build a fence and split it.
I already have a fence up.
But it's not in compliance. That's the issue. We're put in a position to enforce compliance on one property owner when the other property is not in compliance either. So, to me, that doesn't seem fair. So, I would really hope y'all will come to an agreement on your own and figure it out and have this in our court, so to speak.
Lisa, any other questions?
So, the part that you don't like, and I'm looking at the, at the plat in front of me, is from the fence that splits her, and I live real close to you, too, so I know all the areas that you're talking about. So, there's a fence on Farmers Insurance, like a backyard fence.
Yes.
So, from that point forward is where...
Yes.
And I'm with Brett in that I would prefer to see a landscape barrier also instead of wooden fences. You see those falling down, all down our streets, right? So, and it makes sense to put it in at the eight-foot if that is what those grow to be their best capacity, but that's not meaning with your immediate needs, so...
I will, another...
It's not quite getting there, is it?
Well, another, you can ask Angela to come up and speak, but we've been talking back and forth. Another temporary solution that she offered up was to park their vehicles on the other side of the parking lot until those hedges grow into their eight feet, so that the cars aren't immediately visible, you know, A, while the house is for sale, and B, while the shrubs aren't that tall. It's not a permanent solution, but, you know, it's something.
Rather than having both people up there going back and forth, I thought we'd at least start. So, Marcus?
One clarification, please. You mentioned a fence that you had proposed being built all the way to where your front yard meets the backyard? Did you mention that?
Yes.
And that's something you proposed and chose not to do, or that was just part of the dialogue that you had?
No, that was just part of the dialogue that Angela and I had. Rather than to have the fence built the entire length of the property, which is quite long, just to that cross area there where my fence is divided for going to the backyard.
Okay. My other question, you clarified, which was which ordinance did you want enforced? Do you want the ordinance to be enforced on the commercial property? Right?
Yeah, I didn't know there was another issue, so, I mean, I've...
Okay. And then the zoning, maybe you can help with this, and I'm assuming you did not, so you did not build the house in '95. You purchased the house subsequent to that.
Oh, yeah, the house was built, it's about 25 years old.
Oh, okay.
So, maybe more. I'd have to go back and see.
I looked at the tax records today. It said it was built in '95.
But you're not, you didn't build it?
Two other people lived before I did.
So, when you purchased the home, where, what was the zoning of the property next door?
CSC.
No, it was residential. It was a residential, and they went and got a grandfather clause where it was zoned for this semi-commercial, not the heavy commercial. But it was a house there. Mrs. White lived there, and it was an old house that they tore down when both, they were sisters that lived there, and they died, both. So, they tore the house down, and then they found this grandfather clause to do a commercial property there. But it was a residential property when I bought it, and it was residential property there for years and years and years. So, I don't think that that fence that you're talking about was required as a residential property.
Well, if it was zoned commercial, we've got to verify what the property was zoned.
It was residential when I bought it.
If you have a residential house, it would still be zoned commercial. The house might have been, we've got to figure that out.
Actually, no one knew, no one knew that there was a residential, that there was a commercial grandfather clause there at all. Everyone that, we all knew was that it was residential. It's always been a residential, and we thought it was being sold as a residential property.
Thinking that the property's always been zoned commercial, and it was the house that was grandfathered, the residential property.
Aubrey, what did you, what did...
Fifty years. I mean, I don't know. The house was ancient.
I looked at the 1994 official zoning map today, and the 104 Melody Lane was zoned CSC in 1994.
Okay.
I didn't go any farther back than that, because the house was built in '95.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, so, explain to me, I didn't, I'm a little bit as confused as you are, that the house that was there when it was built, her house, not by her, was, should have required a fence in at that time, back in 1995, because it was CSC next door, next to single-family. So, if you build a house on it, you need to put a fence in, even if you're building, we're used to building the commercial one, not the residential one. But in that, even in the other case, whoever builds has got to put the barrier in.
Whoever's there first, basically. Yeah, if the single-family is established next to a commercially zoned property, it doesn't matter if...
What's there.
What's there. If it's zoned commercial, then the eight-foot fence would be required. They're not required to do the other landscape buffers and all that, but the eight-foot fence is required.
Okay, so that when it comes in, they don't have to, okay, so the first guy in is the one who has to put it in?
Yeah, and you don't end up with two fences.
It was zoned that before this house was built. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so...
Hey, you got me.
One of the mitigations that was offered, that Aubrey mentioned, was parking on the other side. Does that make it any better for you?
I told her that that's nice of her to do that, but it's not going to alleviate the problem.
Okay.
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 I appreciate it.
And then your house is for sale now, or are you getting ready to put...
It's for sale, but I just took it off, because people that have come have not been happy with the commercial property next door.
Gotcha.
You know.
Okay, no, that's all the questions I have here.
How long you guys had this conversation? Is this recent, or you've been doing this for a couple of years?
Actually, I talked to her prior to her building being finished, and I knew that there had to be a fence put up, so, because somebody told me, the city told me, I think, and I suggested a greenery type fence, but I haven't heard anything since then until I called Aubrey, I guess, what, a month ago, maybe?
So, y'all have been talking for the past...
We haven't talked since then. I suggested it, and I just kept on thinking it was going to happen, but nothing's ever happened, so...
So, I agree with the other commissioners. I'd really like to see the shrubbery, make it look a lot better. What struck me is you said really you're concerned about the parking lot. So, what if you took the 18 shrubs that she's offered to do and just put them so they shield your parking lot? That's, I think you've got about 150 feet of fence line. Is that about right?
You know, I don't, I don't know, but...
Okay, I think that's what it is, if you're going to do eight feet, 16 by eight feet, that's what I come up with. So, why don't you just put that shrubbery where the parking lot is, and then I think everybody's happy?
That's what we were doing. We were only going, we were only putting it from the start to the end of the parking lot. We weren't going the full length of the property.
That's not the way I read it.
It isn't?
I mean, right now, the way the proposal is 150 feet every, one bush every eight feet. So, is it 150 feet to your backyard? Oh, really? So, you are just talking about that, then?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I would be agreeable if the plants were closer together, if the tall, the six-foot plants were four feet rather than eight feet.
So, my question is, could you guys just leave today? Work something out and be done with it? I mean, it seems to me you can do that. I mean, it just feels that way.
Well, I'm agreeable to try to anything.
Okay, so, I mean, you hadn't talked in four years.
No, we've been talking a lot in the last week. No, 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 we've been talking, two years, four years ago, I mentioned it to her, but nothing's happened since then. But we talked, I guess she contacted me, we've talked some the last week or so. She told me about the three-gallon plants, then she told me about the seven-gallon plants, then she told me about the 15-gallon plants today. So, we only heard about the 15-gallon plants today, but we've tried to, I mean, I told her what I, I would just be happy if they get them tall, and she came over and we looked at the parking lot and how high they need to be and all this, and I thought we would, I thought we were pretty agreeable, but I just, I just know that, I know a lot about plants, and eight feet apart, it's great, but the ones that I've seen that are planted as wall buffers, and you can go down Melody Lane and look, they're planted like three feet apart. So, you know, three, four feet, but eight feet?
Okay. So, another question, if she came and she said you needed to provide a fence, if she filed a complaint, would she, would you then call her in and say, hey, you've got to do this?
Like I said, there's a violation on both sides.
Okay, so, she said that, and y'all would have to come to an agreement. So, to me, the easiest thing to leave tonight, to talk it over and be done with it.
Okay.
That's to me. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but that's where I am.
You have a legitimate concern. There's no doubt in that.
And she can come in and file a complaint, and we're going to do the same thing on the other foot.
You know, the only thing that I don't think that you all are digesting is that the simple fact that there's a commercial property next door to me has devalued my property. So, anything that we can do to buffer it is the best we can do. So, you know, I'm doing my best to try to make it where it's blocked out, but, you know, eight feet ain't going to get it, so I don't know.
I am sympathetic to that, but when you bought the property, it was commercial, and so, nothing changed that, other than someone exercised their rights to do what they had the right to do.
You know, I agree with that 100%. That's my fault, because I didn't research it, but there was a house and two women living there.
Yeah.
I had no idea that it was commercial.
See how you could, I would have missed that.
And I'm a realtor, and I didn't even think to go check the houses around me to see if they're commercial. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. So, you know, I apologize, but I didn't know.
No, no, I appreciate, I would probably do the same thing. I do understand.
Question, comments?
No, I really don't have any. Yeah, I'm kind of echoing some of the other commissioners' thoughts as well. It would be, both of you have put us in a little bit of a spot, so let me ask one question as far as mechanics. What authority does the Planning and Zoning Commission, what's before us tonight, is are we willing to allow shrubs versus a fence? That's what's before us tonight. But we also have heard that there's out of compliance on both sides. There are no fault of yours, I understand that. You didn't build the house. But that's the situation we find ourselves in, is both properties are out of compliance. Do we, as the commission, have the right to say, well, fine, if you can't agree, build a fence, an opaque fence, and you're going to split the cost, because it's out of compliance on both sides? Do we have that authority to do that?
Should we order them to build the fence and split the cost?
No, that's what I'm, I'm just asking. I'm asking what, what's the limit, what's the, I know, I'm just asking the limits of our authority. We can either approve the fence or approve the shrubs at this time.
As an alternate, yeah.
My question is, how can you hold a homeowner that bought a house third person down, had nothing to do with building at the time that it was built, and if it was required then, the city should have required it? Why would you put that back on me after three other people have lived there? That doesn't make sense. I'm sorry.
I understand your point. I'm just trying to stretch the issue to understand both sides.
Yeah, okay.
And I want to, I want to hear from the applicant as well.
Just for me to clarify, I would think, my guess is, if we were to enforce the rules, we'd have two parallel fences right next to each other, each one built by each owner, and it would be a silly-looking system that would be suboptimal on both cost and appearance, but that's the law. And then we can look for exemptions that get us better. And like you said, splitting the cost on one fence would make sense to everybody involved, but strictly, if nobody wanted to talk to anybody, we could enforce two fences, one on either side, each making it compliant, I suppose.
Or agree that three-gallon, I mean, I'm just not saying, not saying that's what we're going to do, I'm just saying, we could just say, yep, three-gallon, we'll eventually get there, and that's okay. We do have that right to do that, because that's what's before us tonight. Is there anything, any other questions for us?
To be clear, I've heard some words that seem to me to be in dissonance to what I thought the motion was tonight. What was the motion? What did, what did we agree to discuss?
The applicant has come in and asked to install shrubbery. Well, I'm not going, I'm going to let Aubrey read it, because I think it's to install shrubbery versus an eight-foot fence.
Okay, so, we're not, that's, that's my point. We're not here to discuss fences. We're here to discuss the shrubbery barrier. That's the only thing that's on the agenda.
Yes. Is that right? I believe that to be true.
If, if this motion doesn't pass to do the landscaping instead, the eight-foot fence is going to be required.
Right.
What's the normal size of, if we were, that we would see in new offerings for those shrubbery against those fences?
So, I mean, shrubs to screen parking for this community overlay district are a minimum two feet tall, planted two feet on center, but that's for screening parking lots, like from the road. Alternatively, some types of vegetation may be allowed for such screening provided plantings are evergreen and dense enough to provide an opaque or substantially opaque screen. A combination of fencing, earthen berms, and vegetation may be used to comply with the eight-foot screening requirement.
So, it doesn't really say that they have to be so many gallons, so many feet apart. It says opaque.
So, Mrs. Bailey, I just wanted to make sure that I understood. It was been stated, and I am not an arborist by any stretch, even close, but that it's been stated that for the plants to ultimately grow to eight feet tall, that they need to be planted some distance apart, whether it's eight, seven, some distance like that apart. Is that something you disagree with, or you have experience that says otherwise?
Yes, and I brought her over to my house and showed her where I planted wax myrtles about three or four feet apart, and how it provided a screen between me and Mr. Williams, who used to be on the other side of me. And they, you know, it, she said you can still see through it. Yeah, I can still see through parts of it, but it's a great screen, but eight feet apart would never be something that I think would work. I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that.
And it's grown eight feet tall or higher?
Probably, what, 10? Probably, what, ten feet maybe, ten feet tall? It's very, it's very tall, but, you know, it has got some, you can see a little bit through it, but it's a great buffer. But they're not planted, and they grew great, but they're not planted eight feet apart.
Any other questions for Mrs. Bailey while she's up here? Okay, thank, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. If the applicant would like to come up and, and say a few words, I'd be, would be glad to, to hear anything you have to say.
So I submitted the eight feet apart before I went over there. I emailed Aubrey and I think I emailed Jackie that I could add two or three or four in. So they're not eight feet apart, maybe they're six feet apart. Um, I think, I know for sure I, I'm pretty sure I emailed Aubrey that this morning. Because the plants are smaller than they normally are because of our cold winters, so there's only one nursery that even has seven-gallon wax myrtles. And, and these are coming from Hempstead, so I've been doing research and, you know, all this stuff. Super interesting plot twist that I so I had something else. So when I first, before I got my certificate of occupancy, I had to do several things that weren't on the plans. Such as, um, I don't know construction terms, but there's a handicap ramp because the building is elevated, and so I had to like screen around the ramp with the same materials so that it's closed. So I guess it had been open on the plan, but once it was looked at, it was like, no, anything closed. Another thing was to screen the meters on the front of the building and the hose bib thing. And screen the AC units. So, from the street. So I've been there, um, three and a half years, three years in December, January. And we planted three-gallon in one, one of those locations and seven-gallon in another bottle brush that are easily ten foot tall. Okay, I'll say eight foot, but they're trimmed. And completely shield everything within three and a half years. So I would just ask that I be held to the standard that would have been four years ago when I was here, almost four years ago to the day, to have my plan approved. Let's see, what else do I have? Do you have any questions?
Oh, we.
Oh, I do. Have one more thing, I'm sorry. I did talk with Jackie before I built the building, before, uh, it was, I don't know what stage, but I was still in my old office. She called. This is my first commercial building to ever build, and my last one. I'll be there till I retire. Uh, and then maybe leave it to my daughter if there are still insurance agents in twenty-five years, who knows? But, um, she suggested wax myrtles. I did not, I didn't even know this commission existed at the time, and I said, and she said, I know that you've got oak trees all along, but once those are taller, it's not gonna shield anything. And I said, I, the, the trees are what the city requires, and so if you would like to change it to wax myrtles, I don't know what to do. Maybe if you let the city know that you're okay with that, then we can go from there. And we did just kinda leave it, and I really wish now I would have tried to figure out what to do. But it's not just eight feet apart. There are, um, trees that are, say, I don't know, six or seven feet tall. They're closer together than every twenty-five feet on that front part. And so some of these plants are even gonna have to go be spaced between trees that are providing some screening, because they're still low to the ground with a lot of leaves and branches.
And before you go on, I was remiss and didn't ask you to state your name for, for the record.
Angela Johnson.
So Brett?
Ms. Johnson, you, you're, what's the cost to, which gonna be the cost to put the trees that you want, the number you want to do?
Seven gallon is, uh, two thousand dollars.
That's, that's what you're willing to put in? And that, how many trees would that be? I mean, how many?
That's eighteen.
Eighteen? It's two thousand dollars for eighteen?
Nineteen ninety-two.
PZ Commission, we're not, we're getting in kind of a neighbor dispute here, which we should not be doing.
We, we tried and I.
I would recommend if Ms. Bailey would know, just put in two thousand dollars worth of bushes and call it a day. You get, you get the same amount, you get the amount you want? You're splitting the cost on the, on the, on the shrubbery. I think that's an equitable solution there.
There, there is another, um, do you wanna talk about this offline? What he's saying, splitting the cost?
I've already told them.
Okay.
What my thought is about, I tell you, what is two thousand dollars in devaluation of my property? That's my biggest concern, and I just don't feel that it's my, my duty to do it right now. Sorry.
So that was on the table.
Both properties are out of compliance. I think bringing compliance, it's fifty-fifty.
And there would be three fences, actually, because there already is a fence there. And it's, you know, it's a beautiful fence.
I have a staff question. If, if we don't approve this, then what happens?
Like I said, the, the, I, the site plan right now calls for the eight-foot cedar fence.
So the city would have to enforce Ms. Johnson to put the fence in. And that fence would go all the way down the property?
I would feel com, I mean, I, just go into the fence, the backyard fence that comes across, um, I think would be as far as it needs to go. There's nothing in the back, like all the way to the creek. There's nothing back there.
How do we, how do we rectify, it seems like we're enforcing a, partially enforcing a site plan.
More the intent, right? We're looking at the intent of the ordinance.
Yeah.
So I did notice that those, um, seven-gallon shrubs are like two and a half feet tall. They're nowhere close to providing any kinda opaque barrier.
Let's see, this. Oh, yeah, 'cause they're, 'cause of the winter.
And the, and the fifteen-gallon ones were about four and a half, five, which would probably be just, just barely acceptable.
Anything else?
The, the cost you quoted was for seven-gallon?
Yes.
Do you know what fifteen-gallon ones are?
Thirty-five hundred? Significantly, thirty-four forty-two was the quote for the fifteen-gallon.
The same number?
Mm-hmm.
Lisa, anything else?
Well, my thought is that whenever the plans were approved in twenty fifteen to build, that they were approved with a fence in them that didn't get done. And that so, so here, what we're trying to do today is what is, approve a landscape fence instead of a, a cedar fence, which I'm guessing it would be even more expensive to put in a cedar fence.
Is that, it, yes, it's not cheap. It's like twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-six dollars a foot.
Right, I agree.
Can I ask a question? What was, what was approved in twenty fifteen? Just getting to the backyard or all the way?
Uh, it was all the way down the, to the floodway, or to the flood zone line at the back. I've called the builder, I've called the architect, I've called the whoever was over P and Z in twenty fifteen, like, no one. I was told it wasn't drawn in, it was just a number at the bottom, like number thirteen, and it's not drawn on the plan, and no one. I certainly didn't, like this, I live here, I work here. I'm, I have, I am not, um, you know, built a nice building in my community. I'm not trying to make a commission angry. That's.
Lisa, was anything else?
Is it, is it safe to assume the only reason you're offering this landscape fencing is because you think you're required to become compliant?
Pardon me?
In other words, I'll, I'll word it another way. If you weren't forced to be compliant, would you be building this fence?
I didn't even know it was an issue. It would be like if someone called you today and said your house is out of compliance.
Okay, so.
I, it was nothing, it was not on my radar, so I don't even know how to.
So it's not something you want, it's something you think you're required to do?
Correct. It's a good question, though.
Might be a good question. Doesn't make it easier to make a decision, though. I guess if I can go back to you, ma'am, how, if, if this gets rejected.
If you could come to the podium, please, so.
Sorry for that, but I think this, this question's important for me to help make a decision. As I understand it, if this gets rejected, since it's put up for a motion of action, an eight-foot cedar fence will be put there. And how do you feel about that?
I don't like it. But, you know, the thing about it, it, I don't like it, but what am I gonna do?
I understand. Where, where I'm getting torn is the wooden fence to be fully compliant with the site plan is not something either one of you want to do, but if we continue on this path, that's going to be the result. A landscaping fence is less ideal, but you're not happy with that either.
No, I like.
Set forth by the site plan that we have to vote on the eight-foot.
I'm happy with, I'm happy with a green blocker that's like, that's in your notes, that you require as a city, which is opaque and tall. I'm not happy with a little bitty plant stuck in eight feet apart. No, I mean, that doesn't even make sense to me.
Okay, that helps me. So in order to do the waiver of a fence and put in a landscaping fence, I hope I'm using the right words here, does it have to be eight feet on day one? It would have to meet eight feet at some point in time.
I'll go with six feet, five feet.
The commission can approve an alternative.
Exactly, right. So the only recourse here that I see would be, are, are we allowed to amend the motion and table this? To allow maybe some additional dialogue?
I was going the same spot.
Okay, well then I, I'm done and I'll defer to the chair.
Well, well, I'd like Rich to have an opportunity to ask him a question.
So what was the answer on the table? We can table this tonight and let them go off and talk again?
But I, I think we should only do that if we think there's a reasonable chance that's going to happen, otherwise we just go another month. And, and we're, we're back there, and so far I haven't seen any willingness, uh, uh, some, to, to do that.
I just heard that five feet's okay with her.
Five feet, three, four feet apart, I'm in. Why don't you just put eighteen, have them move it back a little bit, look.
Look, they're talking.
Try to explain, let me try to think about this. Here's the parking lot. So if you start up where my fence starts, there's not really any cars parked there. Come about halfway and put the eighteen closer, that blocks out.
I'll put it anywhere you want.
But they need to be taller than three feet. They need to be five feet minimum. So that's, that's, that's.
Well, well, so I'm gonna go out of order, and sorry about that, but so what you're really saying is, the number of, the number of shrubs is not so important. The key thing that you've said is that you're really trying to block the parking lot. And, and we could, we have the drawings up here, but I, there's no dimensions that I can quickly read. But as long as she took those shrub, some amount of shrubs and blocked the parking lot to the best of her ability, that would meet your needs, whether it was sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, twenty.
Or some other plan.
As long as it's tall enough and close enough together, and that's, that's my, my point, I mean, and.
And what I'm, what I'm just thinking through is, there was an option for the, the larger fifteen-gallon, which were four feet tall, which I think goes a long way to covering most, most cars. And would grow up rapidly from there.
That, that's a good one.
But with that said, they come at a higher cost, so to kind of address the cost issue, I mean, I'm, and I have not done math, and this is one of those things that maybe to work out and think through, is, is there some, okay, let's just make this up. Are there nine, would nine of those fifteen gallons do the, do enough job? I don't know, and you have to do the math of the spread and all that sort of thing. So that's, but, but no, I'm just saying that's back to the things you, you could talk about between now and the next time we meet. Those kind of things seem like maybe they're, you're getting closer.
Yeah, I, I don't think we, I mean, we like each other, we like the building. We are trying our best to make this work, but we both have our own agenda. Hers is a money issue and mine is a value property issue. So we're both reasonable people and we'll do the best we can, but I, I mean, I think you guys can see my point. I don't need to go over it again.
I think even with the pricing, the fifteen-gallon trees are significantly less expensive than a eight-foot cedar fence along four hundred and fifty feet.
You put, if you put a cedar fence from the beginning of that property to the end, you're gonna be in some bucks. So this is a really, whether you put eighteen or twenty or thirty, it's still gonna be cheaper than what the fence is gonna cost.
So I had just a couple of.
You, you, you have any more for Mrs. Bailey?
No, I had.
For the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, no, you're not.
I'm the other half. I, I wanted to ask a few questions to the planning commission. What's the purpose of the fence? That you have in the ordinance?
Purpose of a barrier between, you're separating residential from commercial. That's the purpose.
Okay, for separation. And it's separation, so it's not visible, or it's just, is that the, the intent or the purpose?
There's lots of, there's lots of buffers and different buffers required in different.
The, the thing that bothers me here, that none of us are experts in plants and where you place them and all. And we're sitting here guessing at all this stuff, that this is gonna look right and it's not. But is it gonna serve the purpose of the fence, of blocking between commercial and residential? Will the plants do that? Can you assure me of that?
Wood fence would be better, but Ms. Bailey says she does not want a wood fence.
Yeah.
So we're in a situation, if we approve this, uh, Ms. Bailey's not happy. If we don't approve it, and then the city puts a fence up, Ms. Bailey's not happy. So what, what do we do? Either decision we make, you're still not happy.
Well, you gotta go with what the rules say.
Right, the rules allow us to, uh, put in vegetation. We have some discretion on how to do that. And again, you're right, we are not experts up here on plants, but we are asked to provide our best judgment and experience to do so. We really are, we really are trying to address everybody's concerns here, both yours as the homeowner, the business owner, and the city, to be honest.
But my concern is that you put the plants in, and then it doesn't provide the purpose that was intended for the, the barrier between the two.
And it, it depends on the timing, so I did spend an hour and a half today becoming an expert, more of an expert than I wanted to on Wax Leaf Legunstrum. And, and so I read, I actually saw three different Youtubes and read a couple of articles about this subject. I'm much more knowledgeable on this than I ever wanted to be. But apparently, what Google and others would recommend is you peep these things, um, eight feet apart. Is generally to make a full fence, a full barrier, and that they will grow up to five feet per year, once they get established.
Height.
Height, in, in height.
But how about width?
And if you plant them eight feet apart, they will grow together, is, is what I read on the internet. Now, you know, we trust the internet, but.
There again, the fence immediately covers it.
The fence will do it immediately.
Take a lot longer, which isn't the same thing.
A fence on your property would also do the same. And that's what we're looking at here, too. The commercial side of the house might not be the only one required to put a fence in.
Yep.
I think, I think we're all in the position, and listening to everybody, that I think no one really thinks the fence is gonna be the best result for, for your home and for the business, but we're, we're limited to the options that we have. So I think we're all just trying to find a, a common ground.
So I appreciate what Marcus was saying. I think we only have two choices, neither of which we want to do in front of us today. One is to approve the, I guess it's the, the, the seven-gallon. One is to approve the, I guess it's the, the, the seven gallon, uh, uh, plants at the distance that is proposed, or to not approve that and then default to the fence. And what I'm, think I'm hearing is that there's a different ground, a different solution, that might actually work for everybody, and may, and so I'm now ki- kinda coming to the impression that maybe we should give these, these, the, the citizens a chance to kind of work it out, come up to a rational solution that works, that works for everybody, uh, because I think there is some money here to be saved by doing, being, getting a rational spot in the middle. And so I, I support the idea of withdrawing the motion for, and putting this on a future-
Well, I would like to give the applicant one more chance to, to finish getting questions. No, that's quite all right, no, but I, I just wanna make sure everybody gets heard, so thank you, anything else, sir?
No.
I, I do have a question for Mr. Paul. Is, um, so, is your preference to have the wooden fence?
My preference is to have a barrier that you can't see through, whether it's a fence, or plants, or whatever, you know, that's, to me, that's the intent of having that fence there, is a, it's a barrier you can't see through.
So if, if the way that you get a barrier that you can't see through immediately, 'cause that, I'm guessing that that's what you're wanting is from day one, your only choice is a wooden fence, is that your preference?
If, if it, yes, if it can't, if you, if you put the plants eight feet apart and it takes who knows how long before you, you can't see between it, yeah, I'm, that's, I don't, I don't think that's acceptable.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I had one question before you went, the two and a half feet or four and a half feet tall, does that include the height of the pot? That would take off six inches or maybe a foot.
It is whatever they tell you when you, when they land, the grounds guys calls the nursery and asks them to please measure again and make sure this is the height.
Yeah, that's what I worry about, is that it might sit at three feet, but in fact, when you plant it, it sinks down the depth of the soil.
I would think it's what's showing.
I would hope it's what's showing.
That's, that's what I'm expecting, based on my, based on my experience, I, I mean, I-
I don't think they, yeah, I mean, I don't know why-
I just seen where you quote whatever number looks like the biggest number, and, and then it kind of sticks with the tradition from then on.
So I should've said they were three and a half feet.
Well, to the best of your knowledge.
So you had two, you had two quotes, one for seven, one for fifteen, so one was thirty, four hundred bucks, is that on the table or not with you?
It's not on the table with me.
Dick, did you have any?
No, I, uh, support the, the general premise to table this, and-
I think what you're- Oh, oh, absolutely. Our police department provides some insight.
So-
Save us from ourselves.
Right.
Just, so look, we provided a photo of the existing fence and trees that are out there right now, it was from Google Street View. Like I said, there, there are existing trees that may be closer than twenty-five feet along that property line. It's coming up on springtime, and those trees are gonna bloom. They're not huge trees, so if, if she goes in and puts in shrubs between those trees to provide screening at the fence height, which is four feet, then the tops of those trees are gonna provide screening for the, another four feet above, you know, the fence line.
Aubrey, you talking about the trees that are on the homeowner's property?
On the business property, yeah, Angela installed trees along the property line, uh, when they built it. So if they fill in between those with shrubs, then that will get the screening at the bottom, and then the trees can account for some of the screening at the top.
Are there any estimates, and just since Aubrey brought this up, how, what the distance is between the trees on your side?
No, because when it's closer to the front of the fence, it seems like they're closer together. So there are three or four that are pretty close together towards the Melody Lane.
I think there may have been an existing tree that was kept or something, so, yeah, I think there's like three close right there, and then the spacing requirement was twenty-five feet on center.
I think there, I don't know why it was like that, maybe just there wasn't enough room to plant that many that were required or something, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I know.
I would, thank, thank you very much, I, I had no further questions for you. Procedurally, I'm, would like to propose that we give the applicant and the homeowners another chance to talk this through, now that we've talked about some common ground and desires from, from both sides. I think there's got, there, there just should be a solution that meets both of your needs.
One of, one of the things I thought I heard was perhaps fewer of the larger trees strategically placed where, which would actually meet the intent of the barrier, might meet the financial requirements and make everyone happy. I'm hoping there is some ground there that, that works both financially and aesthetically, and, and gets us past all this. So I think the idea of delaying one or two meetings, which would be two to four weeks, um, to, to allow them to work this out.
Right, yeah, my, my concern is that because of the options in front of the commission on how we can rule, that at the end, neither may be happy with, with the result ultimately. So I would like to, so procedurally, can I make a motion to-
Do I amend mine, or, no, go ahead. Do we ask the person?
Maybe that's the, the way to do it, amend your motion, uh, 'cause we would have to table this, is what the motion would have to be, correct?
Any, either, it can go either way, either Brett can change his motion, or somebody else can make a motion to table, and then you would vote on that.
I move to table Brett's motion.
Table the issue.
Can you second that? You can't second it.
Sure you can.
Do you wanna table it to the next meeting? Actually, I think our rules say any tabled item is automatically on the next-
Yes, I believe that's true.
Always have it, okay.
I believe that's true.
Yeah.
So-
Yes.
So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
I can second it.
I'm sure, I think you can. We have a, a motion and a second to table this topic until our next meeting? All in favor? Shows to be unanimous. I greatly appreciate everybody's time and, and being so kind to answer all of our questions. Thank you very much, I would ask you to really take a look, hard look, I, I would like to think you could work this out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next action item is consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for Chipotle Mexican Grill to be located at seventeen oh five South Friendswood Drive. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aubrey, could you provide the staff summary, please?
Yes, sir. This is, um, so a new freestanding restaurant that's gonna be, uh, located at FM five eighteen and five twenty-eight. If you're looking at Care Now, it's gonna be immediately to the left. Um, it's about twenty-three hundred and fifteen square feet, uh, they meet the parking requirements, uh, they are subject to the community overlay district, um, requirements as far as aesthetics. Um, we, they are gonna match the landscaping that Chick-fil-A and Vergata Commons did. Um, there's a water line that runs there, and then it's open ditch, and trying to get the sidewalk and everything in there was a bit of a challenge, but, so we just asked them to match what Chick-fil-A and Vergata Commons did. The only items on the compliance memo, they are proposing to use some metal panels, um, like accent panels for the facade. Um, it was in the elevations, um, that were in your backup material, so that does require special approval from the commission. Um, and then we will require sidewalk easement to be dedicated, uh, before their CO is issued, um, since part of the sidewalk's gonna be on private property.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you very much.
Uh, a couple, um-
Wait, I'm sorry, is, is there an applicant, sorry, I'll just, is there an applicant here?
No.
So Aubrey, I, I assume that the, the metalwork that they're asking for approval for is a standard Chipotle mark of some kind, this is their normal?
Honestly, I haven't seen very many freestanding, I know there's one in, I think the one in Pearland's in a strip, like, it's usually, they're usually combined with another building, so I don't know that I've really seen a freestanding one.
Yeah, I thought, I'm, I would think you'd know the, the answer if that was a true statement, I was guessing, so, okay. Thank you for that, the, the other thing is, and it's not really the responsibility of, of Chipotle, or, but I, I don't see the street parking lot access thing really being workable. I mean, um, I, I have recently been through the back of, of Jack in the Box, and they've opened that up now where you can enter the parking lot, except you can't drive there because the people are stacked ten deep getting into Starbucks. It's, it's not a thoroughfare, it's, it's a parking lot, uh, where it's supposed to be a thoroughfare. And, uh, the solution that, um, the developer is being, um, I don't know, told to employ, I don't think is workable. And we're all gonna be unhappy about it when the traffic is stacking up on five eighteen during rush hour and the lane goes away. I'm concerned about that.
The thirty, it's a twenty or, I think twenty-foot access easement, um, access utility easement that goes through the Starbucks parking lot, um, that's been, it was part of the original Howard subdivision. That's, I mean, it's a private easement, um, that's there, that's gonna be, I mean, if it's an issue, it's gonna be up between, you know, between those property owners to resolve, um, between themselves. But it, it is an established, recorded easement, but unfortunately, I think Starbucks, when they did their site development, their drive-through stacking spaces are right on top of that access easement. But they are gonna, so there's the, the driveway by Jack in the Box, um-
Onto five eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
The current one, that's, that's in use behind the building?
Yeah, so there's, that's a shared access easement that goes behind Jack in the Box, uh, the bank, um, Starbucks and Schlotzsky's.
Right.
Um, so they'll expand upon that, and then, so basically, there's gonna be a big loop, um, of shared access, it's, it's all poured right now. And then there's another shared access on Chipotle's site, it kind of dugs and runs down their side of their property line. Um, so that's a shared access easement, and then across, um, and behind Chick-fil-A. And so, I mean, I think they did their best to provide, um-
These, this, so there's three or four accesses all onto five eighteen, though?
Yeah, there's gonna be a new driveway where, um, at Vergata Commons and Chick-fil-A, too, it's gonna be three wide, it'll be one in and two out, uh, driveway, um, further down, so there'll be three driveways on five eighteen.
And then the one that's impaired going to five twenty-eight?
Yeah.
What about if the properties behind are developed, is that subject to change, do you think, or?
I, I don't see it changing.
Your point, Aubrey, is that this is a private easement that the commission has really, or maybe even the city, doesn't have a, a way to fix? Is that, I mean, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've capitalized on all the driveway requirements that we can have to five eighteen, um, having the three driveways there. Unfortunately, like I said, that thirty-foot access easement, there's, I mean, there's just nothing that we can do about that at this point.
And if I remember correctly, there was a very strong push from the neighborhood not to allow access to Leisure Lane.
Yes, sir.
And so that was cut off, which would've been another way out of this. And then if I remember right, but correct me if I'm wrong, behind it is all of the retention pond.
Yes.
So accessing back to Winding Way, which could've happened, um, is, is impaired, um-
Well, there's other-
That's true, but that's up by Chick-fil-A area, not down here, not, not where Chipotle is, right? Am I wrong?
Uh, the detention pond is, yeah, behind Chick-fil-A and Vergata Commons.
Yeah, not, not this far down.
Yeah, there's another commercial tract behind this one.
Right.
It's where the store was gonna go, the Harley, right?
Yeah.
Right, maybe still is.
So is your concern for this property, the stack-up?
No, it's not specific to this property, I, I'm concerned about a development, um, saturation.
Worthwhile having a little subcommittee kind of look at this, or, I don't know if P and Z has any right on it.
Yeah, we don't have any power, but-
I do know at the last city council meeting, it was identified as an issue also. And, uh, all I know is our options are shrinking, they may have already shrunk beyond nature, but, but if there are any options, we, we need to do that now, I guess staff has already been asked to do that, I guess what I'll volunteer here is if P and Z can help on that, we're happy.
No, 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 it's quite all right, but-
I can't, we, I, we'll take it back to staff and, um, discuss it and see if there's anything we can come up with, and, um, I can bring some, if we can come up with anything, I'd definitely bring it back to-
We'd like to support you.
Yeah, in, independent of the Chipotle-
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Dick, is there anything?
Thank, no, thank you very much.
Lisa?
Well, the discussion derailed what I was, I was thinking of on this one. Go, go ahead to the others, and if it pops back up, I'll-
I'll go to Marcus.
I'm good, thank you.
Rich?
So, the metal siding, uh, have, as far as you know, and this is kind of unfair to ask you off the top of your head, but have we ever done this before on other buildings?
Uh, we actually approved some metal accents on Vergata Commons, the two strip centers that are going together in.
I'm sorry, maybe that was already said, and I, I missed it.
I think it was, it's, uh, the, some of the higher, um, like accents at the top of the building.
Gotcha, okay.
So-
Yeah, the question I thought was, does Chipotle always do this, and, and they may, but it was more of a question of, does Friendswood ever do this? And you're saying is, it hasn't been a big deal in the past. And the sidewalk, I noticed the wording here says we need to make sure we get the easement for the sidewalk, they are still building the sidewalk, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, that's not, that's not an issue, okay.
Yeah, no, no, uh, since, I think we stood our ground with Care Now, and so we've required all the other-
Now have a sidewalk along there, which pleases me to no end.
Yes.
Thank you.
Brett? Dick, did you have anything? I'm sorry, that's right, Eric.
Yeah, I guess one question, any concerns about the colors? I mean, that red just popped out at me, is that's okay, that color?
Um, it, hopefully it would be like a muted red, like a-
It's pretty loud.
Sometimes it's hard for them to get those elevations, or the colored rendering's exactly right, but-
But there's no, no requirement to-
Well, it's, earth tone colors is our requirement, and usually-
Doesn't look like an earth tone.
A lot of biz, a lot of businesses use the red, the Kentucky Fried Chicken, Wendy's, and we just ask them to-
These we just approved a year or two ago, they redid all their stuff to be a, a red very similar to this section.
There's red all over this, it's not just there.
It is a muted red, I have a sample in my office. It's like a, like a barn red, like we told-
Requirements, then, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, like everybody else, I think the, the metal and, uh, that much of it, other than the Vergata Commons, is there, is this similar to anything else we've approved? I know we did accents, and we approved it, that, the, the good thing then was, we actually had samples that, that they brought, that was very helpful. You're saying you have a sample in your office?
Uh, yeah, of, of the color, yes. I can't remember, it may have been the material as well. I was trying to think.
So- So, sorry, but does the, does the metal meet our requirements, or, or it require, is it an option? Or is it special, it's only by a vote from P and Z that it would be allowed?
It's only if it's allowed, um, by P and Z. It, so metal, wood, and hardy are prohibited materials unless the commission approves, um, alternate materials. And usually, it's, as, um, historically, we've approved it as, uh, like screening up on the rooftops, like if they're using metal louvers or something to screen the AC units on top of the building. Like I said, Vergata Commons, I think it was just at the, like, the, um, like, basically like the parapet wall at the top of the building, it, I don't know that it was the wall, like-
I agree. I think that's right.
So Google Images on Chipotle buildings, it, it is, um, a common style for them to have the metal siding accents, like the picture that we see, although you can tell from looking through the images that whenever a, a subdivision or a, uh, strip center has different requirements, that they comply, so-
that whenever a, a subdivision or a, uh, strip center has different requirements that they comply, so. Although it's common for their, uh, for their buildings, I, I don't think it would set them back to, to do something different.
One of the things, I guess I, no, thank you, it's helpful.
No, the colors that they show are the colors on every one of their buildings. That muted red.
Brett, let me put you on the spot just a little bit. I mean, this is just an accent piece, it's not the whole building. But from using metal, this much metal, uh, in this, in this fashion, is that from a builder, developer point of view, builder, builder mainly? Longevity, that sort of thing, any concerns from your point?
I really can't offer a opinion on that, 'cause I've never done a metal, metal building before. I just, that's something way out of my expertise, so, I mean, it is a modern building, no doubt. Uh, if this was going to be in downtown Frinswood, I'd probably be against it, but this is going in an area of town, there's a lot of other fast foods, there's, I mean, I think it's going to fit in okay. But it is a lot of metal.
I actually like it. I think it's a pretty accent.
It's a modern look, yeah.
As I see the design, it's, it's really the red that is the metal.
Right, I think that's right.
I think everything else is a more natural building material, um, and that's really on the side of the building.
I, I've called it an accent, the big accent. Were we reading this right, Aubrey and Becky?
Yeah, the only, I did want to point on the elevations, if you look at that, um, so you have that red panel, and then there's another red section next to it on the west elevation? That is, um, hang on, let me zoom in if I can.
It says external charcoal molyons.
Yeah.
Um, I did look that up. So it's got the red ephesus behind it, and then the molyons that go on top are, um, vertical gray, like vertical louvers, basically, so you see the red behind the gray.
So the ephesus is the facade?
The ephesus is the facade, and then there are louvers on top of the facade. But molyons aren't necessarily any particular material, it's just the style. So they, I don't remember what it specified, if it was metal, or aluminum, or maybe even wood, or more ephesus.
It says ephesus system behind molyons.
Yeah, so the molyons themselves, I'm not sure what they're made out of. I would assume some type of aluminum.
Yeah, 'cause they're usually, the molyons are like the frame around a window.
Yes.
Um, so it's usually aluminum. I think it's pretty, and it gives the building interest.
Yeah, it's like a 3D impact, 'cause you see one in front of the other.
Go back to your question, I, I have installed metal roofs, and that they are much more durable than a conventional roof, so metal is a much more durable product.
Okay, well, I, I put Brett on the spot now, Aubrey and Becky, it's sort of your turn. You've been talking to the developer of this facility, of the, of buildings, Chipotle. Any, anything, anything else as far as the, the construction and what we're being asked to approve as a variance? Anything else that you can add to that? Any concern, well, any concerns that you have after those conversations that this would not end up being a suitable material? Any reason that we should not approve this?
Um, I, I can't think of any, um, I, I think with approving the metal accents on Vergata Commons, this might kind of help it blend in with that building, and they are, I mean, they are more modern looking. So I, like I said, I, just aesthetically, I think it might blend in. Of course, you have Care Now that doesn't have any, um, and Chick-fil-A is not going to have any metal, but, um, it's, I think it'll be, it's going to be unique.
Becky, anything to add to that? Wanted to let you get off Scott first.
Uh, no, sir, I, I would, did go back and forth with the designers a bit on what this was actually going to look like, and I did the same thing, the Google searches, looking at ones that have been done, because usually around here, you see them in the strip centers. Um, so this with the freestanding buildings, a little bit different, but it should blend in with Vergata on the corner. And it's, they're accent pieces, some of it's on the side and the back, it should look good.
Marcus, you had a, thank you very much. Marcus, you had a question?
No, just a footnote, 'cause you were asking about variances and things, and I think we, we still have the color red and whether or not that fits an earth tone, just in case it's important to note, that's a footnote that came up earlier, I just wanted to make sure it was clearly stated.
Aubrey, Becky, I mean, does this fit into the, our definition of earth tones for?
It does, it's reds, browns, grays, tans, greens, and it specifies an muted color, which is what we did with the Wendy's. They came, they came with, um, red, red-red, and we asked them to come back with a different option for a muted color, so that's how they, that's why they have that kind of brick-looking shade.
Any other, any other questions at this time? Do we need to?
Sure, I do have one comment. So what I, I really liked about it was the outdoor seating. I believe the Vergata also had like an outdoor patio in the back. Um, I think it really, um, with this, having that outdoor setting tying in with the Vergata outdoor area, I really like both of those, I think it gives a more community feel of, of gathering and things like that.
Am I wrong, there's an emergency care between those two? So they're not going to flow together?
Oh, maybe we'll just-
Well, we can have the cribs.
Maybe we'll get a good sidewalk around the back.
Okay, do we need to amend our motion to include the staff comments?
Yes, sir, to approve the, uh, metal facade.
Okay, so, so Dick, it's up to you to, we need to amend your motion to approve to include, can we just say to include staff's comments, or do we need to?
Like to modify my motion to include the staff comments.
Second.
So we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Okay.
That one was easier.
Moving, moving right along. Okay. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission date. Aubrey?
Yes, sir, um, so next month, uh, we will start our new, um, separate public hearing process and meet on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month, so don't forget to change your calendars. Uh, so next month, we'll be meeting on June thirteenth and June twenty-seventh, and we do have three zone changes to kick off our new process, so. We'll give it a good whirl.
Next on our agenda, our communications, do, do any commissioners have anything they wish to communicate? Suggestions for future agenda items, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments? And I'll just, I'll start.
I'm not the first.
I've not had another meeting.
Brett? Eric?
Sir?
Okay. Ms. Franzen, thank you so much for being so patient with us.
And I'll be very brief, because I know we'd all like to get home. I just wanted to congratulate y'all, I know you probably know this on our last council meeting, uh, the subcommittee recommendations on our ordinances and what have you, that everybody worked so hard on, they all passed, and it was unanimous. So I just want to say congrats, good work, and I think council is, uh, supporting your recommendations, I just want to say thank y'all very much, that was great work.
Great, thank you. Staff, Aubrey, Becky?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Aubrey?
Um, no DRC meetings were held in April, so you didn't get a DRC report this month. They've been very few and far between, so.
Mary Kay, any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, well, with that, uh, no, no further comments, the planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned.